Okay, thank you everybody for your patience. We are back after our technical pause. We are still in our public hearing for review of major development 01-2023. Our chief planner, Mr. Rudy Pareja, made his presentation and we were about to see if the commissioners had any questions for Mr. Pareja.
And they just a motion to come back.
Oh, thank you, Val. That's an easy thing to forget. So is there a motion to come back into our public hearing?
Sumut.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascherinius. Val, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Vehill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherinius?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chairbrush?
Yes. Thank you again, Val. So, all that said, we are available to, for the commission to ask Mr. Pareja questions about his presentation and the packet, the staff report that he's presented.
Madam Chair.
Vice Chair Romero.
I have a question. I look at the vicinity map and is there an actual road to the site at this point?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Romero, yes, there is. As you, as referenced on the, the screen there, they have, they have, they're going to have a direct access off of New Mexico Highway 68. And then also adjacent to the subject property, you'll have Blue Sage Road. So there's two points of access to the subject property. Based on the determination of the state highway department when they gave the applicants their access permit, they're gonna close down the old access that was existing on that property. And then they're gonna create a new one for better traffic flow. Mr. Alex Abeta, when he makes his presentation, can give you a little bit more technical details on that. But yeah, there is two accesses to the subject property, as you could see on the map there.
Thank you, Mr. Pareja. Vice Chair Romero, do you have additional questions?
Oh, yeah, another question is, I'm a little bit vague. I'm trying to understand, what is this commercial enterprise? How, how is it gonna make a profit? Is it gonna employ workers? What, what, how, how, how is it a benefit to the community?
Okay, thank you for that question, Vice Chair Romero. Madam Chair, yes. Based on my understanding of the applicant's business plan, their idea is to operate a farm and ranch supply. And a part of their business plan is to renovate farming equipment. You know, take old farming equipment, renovate it, and then turn around and sell it to local farmers or any farmers within, you know, the tri-state area who would be interested in purchasing their equipment. So that's my understanding from the applicants. They don't reference how many employees they're going to have, but with your permission, Madam Chair and Vice Chair Romero, I can bring up the applicants and maybe they could explain a little bit more how many employees they're gonna have. But that's my understanding again, from their business model, is that they're doing it to support the local farmers and any farmers within Southern Colorado or, you know, in other parts of New Mexico, by providing with them affordable farming equipment through, you know, renovating it and then selling it to them. So if you would like, Vice Chair Romero, I can bring up the applicant and they can maybe explain a little bit more.
Yeah, I'd like a little bit more detail, especially on any new employees or.
Okay, sure. Okay, so if, if you wouldn't mind, either Alex or Ms. Tallman? Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Abeta.
Good morning. Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Alex Abeta. Madam Chair, Vice Chair Romero, Commissioners. This project is currently a business located off of Salazar Road. It's located on a piece of R4's owned town of Taos property, owned by Sarah Tallman's father. It's a non-conforming use. The town of Taos is asking them to vacate the non-conforming use. And that's what's pushing for this movement. When we did the traffic studies to get the DOT permit, Sarah had three employees at the property. We did traffic counts and this project generates probably the lowest traffic count we've ever done. It's lower than RV park. It's way lower than a storage unit project. So it's the minimal impact of all commercial businesses, not only in the town, also in the county. So currently, it's three employees. Sarah oversees it and there's three employees. She will come up after I present the application and talk a little bit and she will elaborate whether three employees will end up going to four or five, but I don't have, currently it's three and it's been in operation for approximately 10 years.
Thank you, Mr. Abeta. Appreciate the information.
I have no further questions.
Commissioners, further questions for Mr. Pareja? Okay. Okay, thank you very much, Rudy.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and now I will go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Alex Abeta, the agent on this application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, Madam Chair, Commission members, audience. The Farmers Helping Farmers Project is a existing business going on 10-plus years that takes used agricultural equipment, pipe, irrigation materials, alfalfa valves, recycles them, fixes them, and sells them to local farmers. Basically, as a ditch commissioner myself and as a parxiente, there's a big need for the Aseca program to try to stay alive. And right now, this project is a big help in that Sarah and Cameron provide materials for that. And if you drive around our agricultural lands, a lot of our farmers are going to this modern irrigation equipment, rather than an open earth ditch. You'll see white pipe, you'll see galvanized metal pipe. And so it's becoming the irrigation system of the future for the Taos Valley. The applicants are Sarah Tallman, which is sitting here, and her husband Cameron Spung. Her father is also here, as I said. The current business is on his land off Salazar Road. And we are being asked to vacate that use there because it's non-conforming. In the record is this bound application book that you all have. I'm gonna walk you through all 15 tabs, so it's gonna take probably 20, 25 minutes. I'll be as, as quick as possible. This application, we originally submitted to the planning department in October of '22. So we're going on a little bit over 18 months in the process. And we really need to try to get this approved and move forward with locating to the new site. Meanwhile.
Did you mean October '21?
'22.
So that's been 17, 7 months.
I'm sorry, October '21. So, and I stand corrected on that. Let me verify here my cover letter from. October 10th of '22 was a resubmital. Actually, I stand corrected, October 10th of '22 was the original submittal. So we've been going on seven months now. Not, not 18 months. So back to the application book. The major development land use regulations of the county require that any project greater than five acres, greater than 2 million, or greater than 80,000 square feet, go through a major development. Because this project is gonna use 13 acres of a 16-acre parcel. It's a major development. So we work with Mr. Rudy Pareja, with your planning commission. We did receive a unanimous approval from the planning commission and that's a, an approval, which was a recommendation to bring it before the Board of Commissioners. Today, we're asking the Board of Commission to review the application and act on that. So I'm gonna start out, you'll see on your book that we submitted in May of '23, the updated packet book. Immediately inside the front cover of the packet is the affidavit of publication, where we advertised the Board of Commission public hearing. Following that is the notice that was mailed to the adjacent property owners or the property owners within 1,000 feet. Right behind that is a 12-page record of position from the planning commission. And I won't get into the details of that, but going onward is the cover sheet for the October '22 submittal. And then there's a table contents that breaks out the 15 tabs that are in the book. Starting with tab one, we've got the submittal letter of October of '22. We've got the county review letter of January 5th of '23. We've got the resubmittal letter of February 9th, and of course, the deemed complete letter of March 3rd, which of course are followed by the approval record of position. The 18 months that I referred to earlier was the timeline from when Abeta Engineering was hired to prepare the application and get it submitted. So we are on 18 months of timeline. Seven months of that is on the approval side of it. On tab two of the application book is the filled-out major development permit application. As I said earlier, it's greater than five acres and that's what triggers this. On a lot of the checklist items that are in the application form, we refer to the cover letter that is in tab one. The cover letter entails approximately 44 pages of how we believe we meet the special use, major development application requirements. I do wanna emphasize a couple of them. In the bold section is the requirement by the land use reg. In the unbold is our response. And I wanna touch on compatibility and visual. The Highway 68 corridor, while the county has no zoning map or no zoning, you have what's called county rural area designation. So any commercial project other than cottage industry, home industry, or residential has to go through either a special use permit or a major development. So along Highway 68 on the south end, the uses along and adjacent to Highway 60 are predominantly commercial. Some of those are grandfathered, being they existed before county ordinance of 1997. Subsequent to '97, any commercial use is required to get a special use permit or a major development. But along Highway 68, as you come into Taos from the south, on the left-hand side was the Old Egg Farm. There was a drum shop. There's one property owner, Manuel Cordova, who has a non-conforming used equipment, used vehicle sales, and some of it is on state right-of-way. On the right side, we did a special use permit for Keith Randall. He put up a new 12,000-square-foot metal building. I believe this summer, he'll put up the second 12,000-square-foot building. Going on north along 68, there's commercial on both sides of the highway. There are a few residential areas. As you get closer to Yano, we took the old Taos motel, converted it to a bed and breakfast through a special use permit administrative. So I'm just trying to emphasize that both sides of Highway 68 along this reach are predominantly commercial use, whether they're grandfathered, non-conforming, or they've gone through this process of approval. Those uses exist. We recognize that beyond this commercial corridor, it's residential or predominantly residential. Keith Randall does have the outlaw garage up at the back of Blue Sage Road. Other than that, it's predominantly residential. On the visual compatibility, Sarah is gonna put up a 6,000-square-foot metal building. I'll get into the details of the size of that here shortly. But she's already provided and installed several large trees around the perimeter along 68 and the south side. There's additional shrubbery that'll go in under the landscape plan. This pipe is stacked approximately 68 feet high at the current site, at the new site. It'll be similar to that. It's spread out on 13 acres, so you know, she's not gonna have piles that are 30 feet high or 20 feet high. There are all gonna be low piles, six or eight feet, but you know, it is going to be visible. Going on to tab three of the application book. Tab three includes the state engineer water well permit. This water well has been in existence for quite a while, so it's got 3/8 feet of water use permitted. And it does include, in conjunction with a commercial use, so that allows us to use the well for the bathroom facility that will be in the new 6,000-square-foot building. It is well number RG 09573. Going on to tab four, that's the approved application for liquid waste permit, i.e. the wastewater permit that was issued by the local NMED office by James Genison. Going on to tab five is the confirmation of address. As Mr. Pareja mentioned, there are two existing access points to this property off Highway 68. As we did the application with NM, NM DOT District 5, Mr. Javier Martinez requested that we agree to close off one of the access points and he issued a permit for one of them. So as this project moves forward with construction, we will raise one of the points, access points, and get rid of it, and we'll keep the other one. This property does not enjoy anisement onto Blue Sage Road. While it runs parallel and adjacent to the property, the, the owners do not have access to Blue Sage Road. So our only access is onto Highway 68. Attached to the back of the address verification letter is the standard aerial photo that's issued by the county. There is currently four buildings on the property. Several of those buildings are used by the business that's been in operation Taos for probably 30-plus years, sign business that does local signs for businesses. That owner recently sold the business, but he's still doing smaller signs and smaller projects out of there. So those four buildings that show up on the photograph there in tab five are all grandfathered. The prior owner, the Beistow family, had commercial use out of there. So we're just trying to emphasize that those four buildings are already grandfathered for commercial or residential use. Those uses are not gonna change if this special use permit is approved, but they are on part of that 13 acres. The next page there in tab five is the FEMA flood zone. There is one larger oil to the west of the property, but we're staying away from that. We're not getting near it. Behind that is the rural address application form, signed off by the county planning department. The next form is the flood plain wetland determination form, also signed off by the county. Tab six is the warranty deed from Cameron Spung and Sarah Tallman to husband and wife for consideration to Cameron Spung and Sarah Tallman. Track 59B is the 16 acres, and we're gonna use 13 acres of that for this project. At the back of the warranty deed is a fold-out survey plat. And the survey plat shows parcel 59B along with a triangle there that adds up to the 16.704 acres. Ms. Tallman plans to build for her and her husband a home on the south, 3 acres of the 16 acres. The north 13 acres will be this commercial project. They also own the adjacent parcel south of that. So right now, the nearest neighbor to this is probably Keith Randall's commercial building. To the south of the other 5-acre parcel, there is a residence, and then there are several other residences as you go south along Blue Sage Road. Tab seven is a will serve letter from Waste Management for the solid waste disposal. The next letter was to Kit Carson Propane on a request for will serve letter. The actual approval will serve letter is in the front of the book. Same with Kit Carson Electric. The approval letter is in the front of the book and those letters are both located behind the cover. And they are behind the May 23rd cover, there's the October 22nd cardstock cover. And in tab one is actually those letters. Going on to tab eight is a narrative landscape plan that supplements the actual site plan. Basically, what we say during construction, Sarah will relocate approximately 15 evergreen trees and plant them along the Highway 68 frontage. Well, she's already actually done more than that. She put in some large trees. Tab 10 is the approved NM DOT access permit. Tab 11 is the approved fire prevention plan. Basically, this letter talks about how the fire department will serve the property from where, how they'll stage the fire trucks as far as locations. The plan is signed off by the Taos Fire Marshal Eric Oisin Overeek, Marshal, October 10th of 22nd. Eric also signed off on the site plan that I'll talk about in a while. Tab 12 is the terrain management plan required by the land use regs. Basically, it gives the soil type. The property is pretty much sagebrush that has been brush hogged. So you still have a little bit of sagebrush on there and some native grasses. Obviously, the project will do a looped roadway, a metal building, and will take up some of the area. Tab 13 is the preliminary architectural plans for the metal building. The building is 60 by 100 or 6,000 square feet. The eaves will sit at 18 feet high and then the crown is slightly higher. So we're definitely way below the maximum allowed of 27 feet. On the fifth page of tab 13 is kind of a three-dimensional view of the building. It's a metal building. The roof and sides colors will be earth tone colors. No bright reds or oranges or pinks, just like a earth tan, light brown, light tan. Tab 14 are the civil plans. These are construction drawings. They're not preliminary. If you'll turn the sheet C2 of the civil plans, you'll see a USGS vicinity map showing the location of the project. On civil sheet C3, there's a roadway cross-section showing that basically we're building 20-foot-wide roadways throughout the loops that I'll talk about here shortly. On sheet C4 is the site and landscape plan. So there on C4 at the top, you'll see Highway 68. You'll see two existing turnouts. The one on the left is the one we will be using. The one on the right is the one that will be removed. Customers will come in through that access, drive to the front or northeast side of the metal building. We got, I think, 10 parking spaces there, including an ADA parking space. Customers will drive in there, order their material, and then the, the workers will deliver that. There's a looped access around the metal building. There's also a looped access on the staging area on the west side. So as I said earlier, pipe and materials will be stored all around the two loops. We're giving ourselves some pretty good setbacks from Highway 68. And from the west boundary, on the south boundary is Sarah and Cameron's property. C5 are plan and profiles of the access. And as those lead into the property, all our grades are probably in the neighborhood of less than 6%. The fire marshal requires 12% or less. Going on to tab 15. The color photo that's in tab 15 is printed for us by the county assessor's office. It's what we call area of notice map. I believe this one was prepared by Natalie Evans. So in light blue is the 13, or actually, it's the 16.6 acres. In the outer light blue is all property owners within 1,000 feet. Behind the color photo are the owners within 1,000 feet that received letters of the proposed project. And I believe there's about 18 owners that received letters. Going back to the cover, I just wanna emphasize that this major development special use permit meets all the requirements of the land use regulations. It provides affordable farming equipment and materials and pipe to agricultural users. It's been deemed complete by Mr. Rudy Pareja. It's received a unanimous approval by your planning commission. And it stands for approval. I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Abeta. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I have one.
Commissioner Vehill?
Yes, the question is, how far is the closest neighbor? What's the distance?
If we go to tab 15 on the aerial photograph, the closest residential neighbor is along Blue Sage Road. You'll see property 22167. That's a 5-acre parcel owned by Sarah and Cameron. The next property south of that is 22237. That property does have a residence. And I'm gonna say they're definitely within the 1,000-foot area of notice because the outer blue line is that. So I'm gonna estimate that that home is probably approximately 800 feet from the southern property line of the 16 acres. On the other side of the highway, I guess we'd call it the north and west side of the highway, Manuel Cordova has his residence and he's probably, his residence is probably 600 to 700 feet from the property, but he does have a non-conforming commercial use going on there. Over to the north side is, of course, Keith Randall's new metal building, which is a commercial building.
Thank you. Commissioners, any further questions for Mr. Abeta at this time? Gentlemen, any questions for Mr. Abeta? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now then move on to public comment. And we will have folks one by one approach the podium. Make sure you're speaking into the mic. We'll have our madam clerks, where are you in? And then you'll state your name for the record. So if there is anyone in, Mr. Trujillo, do we give three minutes? What is our typical? Three minutes. Okay, so you have three minutes to comment if anyone here come on up and be sworn. Okay, so you have three minutes to comment if anyone here come on up and be sworn in first.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual? Or do... Please state your name and location of where you live for the record.
Lauren Green, 45 Blue Sage Road, Rancho de Taus, New Mexico. Morning, Commissioners, Madam Chair, Vice President. Thank you so much for letting me speak. My name is Lauren Green. I'm a full-time permanent resident of 45 Blue Sage Road. We are the nearest residential home to the proposed major development. I'm also the partner of Marissa Macias, who is co-owner of 45 Blue Sage Road. Our property butts up to the Tallman Spung property, as seen on the map. I appreciate your time in considering these oppositions and important concerns regarding the proposed major development and rezoning. I believe moving forward with this plan will negatively alter the character of the neighborhood and ultimately create significant impacts on safety and general welfare of the residents in the area. There is currently no legally operating commercial business within miles of our residential and rural area, which is truly what it is. This operation will cause lack of privacy by expanding commercially to include general public, devalue our home, devalue and poison the land with toxic inorganic materials like PVC piping, aluminum piping, metal dust, et cetera, cause unsafe traffic, traffic obstructions due to large trucks coming in and out, induce noise pollution as well as induce light pollution with the proposed plan to install flood lighting on their property. This will inevitably, inevitably cause unwanted attention to the current private and discreet nature of our property as well as neighbors. I'm especially concerned about the noise that will increase in our generally quiet area. Along with being an instructor at Vista Grande High School, I'm a professional musician who utilizes our home to record ourselves as well as others. Because of the proposed plan to refurbish old pipes on their property as well as constant loading and unloading large farming equipment, our creative well-being and financial gain will be compromised due to grinding metal noises, loud trucks, general construction noises that do not currently exist at all in this area. Rezoning and approving this plan will forever change the beautiful land and environment. It is extremely important concern of ours as well as other longtime Taos residents and we hope to forever respect, preserve and maintain the surrounding beauty of this land. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Yes, please come on up and get sworn in first.
Good morning.
Hello.
Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Marissa Macias, I am the owner of 45 Blue Sage Road. I own it with my mom who's unable to be here because my grandma is sick and she's with her. So, I'm speaking for both of us, Eva Macias. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to listen and deeply consider the changes we are immediately facing as the closest residential neighbors at 45 Blue Sage Road. This landscape over, this landscape we live in historically has been a place of displacement. And I find the echo surreal as I am here pleading to keep our home positioned to surrounding nature and residences, something we agreed to contractually, we agreed to contractually with the county as we purchased our home in 2020. I would like to speak first as a community member who teaches at the high school and a taxpayer who contributes to the state and county. The applicant, the applicant property sits as a triangle touching the highway at the tip of the triangle. But we are set on a private road. Their 13 acre proposition goes back all the way into our property. We are the closest neighbors. And these two loops, as seen on their civilian plans, because I did read the papers, on their civilian plans and traffic control plans, they noted that floodlights would be installed over the property and on the road. They did also note that they would have a flagger to stand out on Highway 68, which is a 60 mile per hour zoned highway at that intersection. I'm concerned about the access and about the non-access that this development would create. If trucks miss their entrance, they will go to Blue Sage Road, which is not an outlet road, and they will turn around in our driveway. There are no legal commercial uses going on on that neighborhood. I believe that this would create danger for not only incoming and outgoing traffic of Taos, but also for the people standing out on the highway to flag big rigs and trucks in. What also concerns me is the name of this company, Farmers Helping Farmers. If you look up online, it comes up as piping supply and that's all it comes up as. When I looked up the type of piping that will be exposed to the elements on these 13 acres, they have a huge amount of emissions. And this emissions will go into the landscape and will go into our soil and will go into the vast arroyo. The elements here in Taos are crazy, they change all the time. They go from sun to freezing to snow all the way through June. And so, I'm not understanding why a piping yard that carries PVC pipes would be exposed over 13 acres next to our well water.
That is your three minutes, thank you very much. Come on up.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Robin Lombadia, my permanent address is actually in San Antonio, Texas, where my family lives, but I live on the Horseshoe on Pilar Hill, here in New Mexico. Good morning, my name is Robin Martinez Lombadia. I am a writer who moved to the area 10 years ago because I love the silence and solace and was escaping the destructive development that encroached on my family's home. I want to speak to that today. Beyond the environmental impact this would have on the land and our precious water table, please keep in mind this is not eggs or drums, we're talking about exposed PVC and aluminum that leaches carcinogens into the water. I think allowing this serene, beautiful area to be zone commercial would be detrimental not only to the landscape and water, but would be dangerous to the community of Taos. Staying on the land above the horseshoe, I am highly conscious of how dangerous this particular road is in all seasons, but especially in the snowy months. Many times when visiting Blue Sage Road, I have dangerously and very quickly had to rear off the road and missed the turn because of high speed traffic behind me, nearly being rear ended several times. I want to draw attention, this commission's attention to the immense danger this development will put on so many people. Furthermore, I would hope that this commission would want to protect the integrity of the corridor, not only from danger, but destroying what is the most scenic and known and the last undeveloped entryway of Taos. This is the first and lasting memory most tourists will have at the beginning of the community. Do you want it to be a metal yard? My experiencing watching my childhood country rural area become completely devastated by development made me passionate about speaking up today. In some fast decisions made by my neighbors and the county where I am from, I watched one small home industrial business become two and then 10 and a few years completely changed the landscape and topography of my home. The light pollution, flooding and dark skies were so affected that we can no longer see the stars. The noise pollution became so disturbing that I started to have to wear earplugs when outside and to sleep and I am not hypersensitive. The 18 wheelers that happened at all hours made our once silent prairie into a roaring landscape that you could no longer have conversations outside without shouting. The worst part however by far was the traffic, which created a need for the county to spend tax money to expand the road and put in light. I'm sorry. The number of accidents astrolomically expanded. I bring this up and I feel passionate because this development and onslaught of traffic devastated my family as my own father died this past summer due to the development in my rural area and the traffic that it brought. And some fast decisions made by my neighbor in the county. I hope you will consider this and the safety of this community, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Please. Yeah, we can't answer your question, but you can be sworn in and comment if you like. So, is there anybody else who would like to? Yes.
Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Sierra Tallman, my husband and I live in Rancho de Taus also, off of Cuchilla. So, I'd like to add to Mr. Abeta's introduction for what he told you. This business is owned and operated by my family. And we're going to keep it that way, we don't intend to sell out or anything, we employ local Tausenios, we're paying, you know, paying local grocery seats tax and, you know, we're born and raised here. In addition, encouraging people to use irrigation pipe will benefit the local Osakia system to be more effective and efficient throughout the Rio Grande Valley to help protect our most precious asset, which is water. I'm working with the local Osaki associations and soil conservation as well. I look forward to contributing to the economic growth of Taos County. On May 9th, I met with three other neighbors from the south end of Blue Sage Road who had some concerns, they wanted a tour of the proposed project, which we did. And I, you know, assured them that we would do our best to take care of our, our beautiful landscape that we have out there, which we have, you know, we've already planted trees and, and done the best that we can. And, and I also talked to Keith Randall this morning and he said that he was out of town working and he would entertain any phone calls if you guys had any questions for him also, so, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Come on up.
Morning.
Good morning.
Angie Fernandez.
Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, I'm Angie Fernandez and I live in Torres Orejas in Taos County. And I just came here to listen, didn't think I was going to speak, but wow, this is, I just see so much in all of this conversation from supporting a local business, supporting local farmers, supporting the Osakias to yes, protecting the land and the neighborhoods. So, thank you all so much for being present and hearing this. I see a deep conflict and concern for both parties and the value of what both parties have to bring to the table. And all I could do is just recommend some form of mediation because there are two valuable sides and the decisions that have to be made are always, of course, for the greater whole and I can see them on both sides just with the limited information I witnessed today. You know, about floodlights and, you know, all that, is there certain hours that, you know, we can monitor this and the noise and thank you for the trees and, but yes, affecting the water, you know, are there ways we could examine that? I have a, I know a mediator that would be happy to do this for free and that way to hear both sides of the story to at least find, because either way, someone's not going to get what they want, so how do we work in the best way where we can at least see both sides? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay.
Oh, great. I would please like you guys to visit and do a site check, please, please. Just please go walk the road, do a site check. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to make comment?
Madam Chair, there is not, that's why I'm speaking up. Now that we've had a public comment and I think it's done, now there's an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. But it's important that they understand that the questions have to be within the scope of direct, in other words, if Mr. Abeta or anyone else in favor of this request has said something previously, you can ask them a question about that. It isn't an opportunity to ask them questions beyond what they testified about.
Thank you, Mr. Trujillo. So, we can now entertain a question as long as it is directly related to something that has been presented.
And Madam Chair, questions are directed to the Chair and the Chair will decide whether or not to ask the question.
Thank you. Val, does she need to be sworn in? Okay.
Comment period.
Yeah, the, well, we were about to, the public meeting is closed now at 10:13, but you can go ahead and present your question as again, as long as it relates to something that Mr. Abeta has presented.
Yes, originally, it was presented that one of the ingresses was Blue Sage Road and 64 and then after, it wasn't clear that, I was wondering, are they requesting the easement to their property off Blue Sage Road?
Okay, thank you for the question and please, Mr. Abeta, if you would approach and, and address the question.
Madam Chair, audience, the clarification I gave was that currently there's two access points to the 16 acres off Highway 68. We are going to close one and keep one. I did go on and state that the 16 acres do not have any legal access to Blue Sage Road. So, all of our traffic will be coming in and out through the access off Highway 68.
Thank you, Mr. Abeta, for confirming that.
And Madam Chair, do I get a rebuttal at some point?
Yes, I think at this point, if there's anything you'd like to address that you heard in the comments, you can go ahead and do that.
If I could just comment real quick, I don't know if you wanted to open to see if there was anybody online that wanted to comment.
Thank you, Val, I appreciate that. Let's, let's go ahead and do that. If there's anybody watching online, you can please dial in at 575-737-6310.
And Madam Chair, if I may interrupt again, this is still the public meeting, you're going to close it right before you take a motion. So, all of this is still part of the public meeting.
Got it, then the public meeting remains open and if anybody would like to call in from outside this room for public comment, that number is 575-737-6310. And one last time, 575-737-6310 if you would like to comment as part of this public hearing. Okay, then I think we will go ahead and move on. Mr., let me just put this back on, do not disturb. Okay, well, it might ring. It's like, Mr. Abeta, you were about to address some of the comments that you heard and thank you for addressing the question about the road access, appreciate that.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commission members. In my rebuttal, I just got a few comments. The first one is that the property owners that spoke with concerns are all property owners beyond the 1,000 foot area of notice. Your land use regs require that we notify everyone within 1,000 feet, they're the ones that have, I guess, a little more say on their thoughts, but these are all property owners beyond 1,000 feet, all four of them. There's, there's one home within 800 feet, let me get my packet. I did state that there's one owner within 800 feet. And it's prop, if you go to tab 15, it's property 22237. And that's Eva and Marcia Macias. Okay, I didn't hear your name clearly when you spoke, so you're Ms. Macias. So, there is one property owner within 1,000 feet, the other three are beyond 1,000 feet. We did not make any mention in the application of floodlights. We did not make any mention in the application of floodlights. Obviously, we're well aware that the county has a dark skies lighting ordinance. That's a condition of the staff report. We recognize. Madam Chair, may I speak without interruption?
Yes, please. Excuse, if you would please let Mr. Abeta finish. We need to just kind of.
Madam Chair, Commission members, so as Mr. Perea can state, we've agreed to dark skies lighting. We're aware of the ordinance. The 6,000 square foot building, building will probably have a light at the entrance, at the garage door. But they will be lights that are shielded, that shine downward. It's dark skies lighting. We're not going to light up the 13 acres and, and ruin the dark skies. As far as accidents and safety and data, the concerned neighbors did not submit any accident data, any fatalities along that reach. We all recognize that as we drive in from the south, it goes from 55 to 45. And, and some drivers do fly in, but we got a properly approved access permit from DOT. The type of traffic we have is minimal. It did not require a speed change lane. Whether that would have been a right turn, decelerate lane or not, none of that was warranted. DOT is the agency of jurisdiction for that access. And if they didn't feel safe with it, they would not have issued the permit. The permit is issued, it stands approved, the access stands there. So to summarize in the rebuttal, it's just that, you know, the concerned neighbors, I believe, are more concerned about development and growth. We, we recognize that this sagebrush land out there is open and beautiful. And as projects evolve, like Keith Randall, Sarah Tolman, there'll be others. I'm working on RV Park right now near there. The neighborhood is changing, and, and we have to be willing to accept change. We can't lock Taos up in the horseshoe and at the blinking light and say, no more development. Let's just leave it the way it is. It's changed. I've seen it change over the last 30 years. It's going to continue to change, even though there are some visual impacts with that change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abeta. Can we move on to?
Can I ask one question or no?
One, sir, one moment, Vice Chair Romero. At this point, we're going to close the public meeting at 10:20 a.m. And now we can entertain questions from the Commission. And Vice Chair, please, go ahead, go first.
Madam Chair, I had one question from Mr. Abeta on the, what is the property number for the Keith Randall property? And is that zoned a certain way?
So if we go to our Tab 15, the Keith Randall property is immediately east of this property off Blue Sage Road, and that's property 89666. It's 20 acres. And we got a special use permit for commercial use for 2,000, 12,000 square foot buildings on 4.99 acres. So that was not a major development. That was a regular special use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Abeta. Vice Chair, did you have another question for Commissioner Vehil? You had a question.
Yes. What are going to be the business hours?
I'm going to have Ms. Cheryl Tolman come up and answer that.
Our business hours are eight to five during the week. Obviously, we have a really busy season for springtime for the spring runoff. So we'll work weekends on those, you know, two months, this month, this month and last month. But mostly it's eight to five. You know, we're not working in the dark or anything like that. So. But as far as, you know, just my family on the weekends, my employees are just eight to five Monday through Friday.
Thank you.
And I have another question.
Sure.
You were located in the town of Taos, right?
Yes.
And I'm just curious, because obviously there were residential homes around there. Were there any issues at that time?
No, I've been there for over five, over 10 years, you know, and I've just grown bigger than I have anticipated as a small business and for used irrigation pipe to be. So we haven't had any problems with our neighbors. You know, of course, there's people that are buying and trying to subdivide around us and stuff. So we just need more, more space.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, Commissioners? I just have one comment then about the dark skies ordinance. I know that that is a, a number of years old. Maybe, maybe when our staff has all the free moments that I know they never have, we could take a look at that. But I would just encourage you to, since that ordinance, design and, and technology might have evolved since that ordinance was put in place. So I would just encourage, should this go forward, to be extra thoughtful and careful about lighting, because that has popped up throughout the county over the last couple of years, including our own moves. That, that just, that's an area to be extra careful of and extra respectful about. So I believe, Mr. Trillo, now do we, if we're done with our questions and we move on to entertain? Yeah, Mr. Perea, please.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, just to expound a little bit more on the dark skies ordinance. That is from 2005. And it is based on state statutes with regards to lighting and the, and shielding of lighting and the types of lighting that you can have with regards to whether it's LED or sodium-based lighting, things like that. But just to clarify that, that we do have that in place. And even though it's an old ordinance, in some ways, it's still very effective because it does require that the lighting be shielded and that it not be, that it does not go off the property and cause a nuisance to adjacent properties and things like that. So just for the record, I thought I'd clarify that.
I appreciate that, Mr. Perea. Thank you for helping me understand a bit better.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sure. Okay, Madam Chair, so at this point, I stand for any final questions from you as a reporter of the Commission or, and if not, I can refer you to staff proposed findings of fact and recommendations, if you don't have any further questions for me.
No further questions, so you can proceed.
Okay, thank you. So Madam Chair, should you make the determination to approve this major development permit? What I would like to do is, by reference, I would like to incorporate pages 17 through 26 of my staff report as the proposed findings of fact. So I would like to incorporate that into your recommendations. And then also, Madam Chair Commissioners, I would also like to incorporate pages 26 and 28 into the record as my staff recommendations, again, should you make the determination to approve this application. So Madam Chair Commissioners, there's a lengthy proposed findings of fact, but if you would like, what I can do is I can read into the record staff's recommendations. There's nine of them, so, I mean, I'm sorry, there's 11 of them. So I don't know if you want me to read those into the record, or I can just incorporate them into the, into the record. It's up to you.
You don't need to read them into the record.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair Commissioners. Okay, there you go. So at this point, Madam Chair, I turn it over to you as the Commission to make a decision on this application.
Thank you, Mr. Perea. Could you just, for our clarification, repeat the, their staff recommendation and items 17 through 26, and then the pages that you refer to, just to make sure we've got.
Okay.
Got that clear one more time.
Sure, no problem, Madam Chair. So again, for my proposed findings of fact, they are located on pages 17 through 26 of my staff report. And then my staff recommendations, they are located on pages 26 through 28 of my staff report.
And Madam Chair, just for clarification, his recommendations are basically recommendations for conditions. Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Recommendations for?
For conditions to.
Conditions.
First part are findings of fact, second part are conditions, should you decide to approve it.
Yes, Madam Chair, yeah. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Perea, and thank you, Mr. Trillo. So at this point, we would entertain a motion, and Mr. Trillo, if you would just outline.
Madam Chair, at this point, you can make, someone, should they decide to, could make a motion to either approve the, the application. And if they, if they believed or that staff was correct in its findings of fact and, and conditions, they could say something like, I recommend approval based on the findings and conditions as set out by staff in the staff report. Should they decide to deny this, they could say, it could be as simple as you, you're making a motion to deny based on the fact that the applicant hadn't, hasn't satisfied the conditions or the requirements of the ordinance to get approval. Or you could decide to approve it with different findings of fact or different conditions placed on it. So those are your, those are your options. After a motion is made, then there can be a discussion on that motion between the Commissioners and then a vote taken, or no discussion and a vote taken.
Thank you very much, Mr. Trillo. You laid it out nice, nice and clearly. So Commissioners, I would entertain a motion regarding this major development permit. What are the Commission's wishes?
Madam Chair, motion to approve the recommendation of the planning commission.
Okay, approve with the conditions that. Okay, so I, Vice Chair, if I hear you correctly, you are approving with the findings of fact and the conditions as reflected in Mr. Perea's staff report. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascarinas. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascarinas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brash?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you, everybody who participated in our public hearing. This moves us on to Agenda Item 12, Presentations. And we will start with our Madam County Assessor. Item 12A is a presentation regarding the 2023 Taos County Evaluation Maintenance Plan. Ms. Maria Dimas, our County Assessor is here with us this morning. Welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, members of the public. First, I want to ta, take a moment to thank Vice Chair Bob Romero for attending the Eagle View that I had a presentation on earlier in the week. I think it was a valuable tool for us to use in our office, and I look forward to using that a little bit more, so I hope you had a good takeaway from it. Next, you have the 2023 plan in front of you. I'm hoping that you find it informative and acceptable and approve it. I don't know if you all have had a chance to review it. It's been out for a minute there. So if you have looked at it, I went ahead and I included some information that came at request of Commissioner Vehil, and so I'm hopeful that that works for you, Ms. If you look, we have our introduction as to what my conformity is with my job. Those items on page one. And I sincerely appreciate you taking a look at the, the plan in full. We do have the first, second page, which has the staff distribution on there. We did take note of what we have on deck right now. We're still needing some more staffing, but if you look at the information on here, we have three front functions, and one is to locate, assess, and maintain accurate properties. Each of this function corresponds with each of the divisions in my office. And that's GIS, records keeping, and obviously appraisal. So right now I have a staff of 21. I do have, I believe, three temps, four, and we just recently started a new one today. And so we have that filled. I now have, I'm down one GIS person, transferred over to records keeping. So I'm hoping to pick up applications for that as well. So if you have questions in regards to those items in my staffing, anyone?
I just have a quick question. Just to, can you clarify, Madam Assessor, how many positions do you have open or?
Right now, I have two GIS positions that are open. And I have an appraisal position that's open, simply because Daniel moved over to interim, interim chief.
Thank you.
And then I'm down two in records keeping, or rather, one in records keeping.
Thank you.
Okay. On page four, you'll see the legend of sub-districts and districts. And hopefully that's helpful to all of you as Commissioners as to where these properties are located. On page five, you'll see the different 2022 and 2023. And you can see there the taxable for res and non-res. The value increase is at 66,865,500. Below is for 2022, the county saw 51,963,424,000 growth. And of that, 49,94,819 was generated due to building permits. So I believe Commissioner Mascarinas had a question about that last time. And so I hope that helps you. And right below, you'll see the net growth in districts accordingly. If you'll know, we have 326 of those permits came from Taos County. We currently have 773. Some of those, 773, are due to site visit requests from constituents, discoveries, and that is where those come from. We're currently cleaning those up as we have had some with rural addressing that may have had a situation where people were, are living in buses, and they wanted an address for their driver's license and that type of thing. So we're in the midst of cleaning that up. So that number will probably drop quite a bit once we get that situated as part of the plan. Any questions on that part of it?
Any questions, Commissioners?
What page are we on? I'm sorry.
Page five.
Page five, okay. Just, actually, this is great information, Madam Assessor. I really appreciate it. I would just recommend on, if you could help us in the future. For example, one in is, you and I know what it is, and one out and one A. But for the Commissioners here, or anyone else looking at this, one in is the city limits, one out would be the outside of the city limits. We're looking at page five, right?
Right, and that the code breakdown is on the previous page right before that, page four. Page four, okay. There we go. My bad. My apologies. I didn't, I missed that. I was focused on five. Appreciate it.
Sure, no problem. On page six, you'll see the statistics on there. Our base growth, when I came into office, I started out at about 15, 1 billion 500 million and change. I'm pretty close to 1,700. So when you're looking at that, it's almost like a 200 million growth. When you average it out, I believe I was looking at like 66 million. There are different factors that go into that. The first year, of course, where we had our hiccups with reporting incorrect information. We had the state assessed, and that should not have been included in my report. And that was the reason why there was such a dip on that. So just in case you're wondering how that happened. If you look at the tax base right below, you'll have the actual information on there. Instead of just the graph, you'll have the tax base there. And so when we're looking at this information, you can see Taos County growing in leaps and bounds. Any questions on that part of it?
Commissioners, any questions? No? Okay. Thank you. Keep going, please.
Thank you. Then we have the parcel counts. As you can see, in 2018, I'm going to go just overall instead of meets and bounds and breaking it down. We were at 71,118. Today, we have 72,199. So that number has increased by 1,115. And so anytime you have that kind of growth and you're trying to see, capture, it's rather difficult with the limited staff. So I have to keep going back to that, just because I want to make sure that you all understand my situation at hand. Below is a graph where you have the residential, non-residential, and the different districts on there. And if you go down, you can see the difference with all the information that we have up front to right below. One in, one out, one A, the fours, sixes, and so on. Any questions on that part of it?
No, I believe so. Thank you. Thank you.
On page eight, we have residential value by district, and of course, you can see one in has quite a bit, one out really gives that a shot in the arm, one A, which is inclusive of, I would say, Taoski Valley, that really brings that number up really high, and that's, that reason is because, obviously, there's a lot of development going on there, a lot of growth. So below that, you're going to have the head of family by district, and obviously, one out, and one A again. Those have a lot of residential area, one in has a more dense area, but it's got a lot of commercial property in there. So that's where you'll see those. And then the other ones respectively come in as such. And then the second, secondary homes by district. If you see the footnote on the bottom, I'm not sure that this information is solid. A lot of people have their mortgages paid through another addressing, and so my thought is that this information is not accurate. But nevertheless, it was a request playing the game. There's your information. So any questions on that?
Commissioner Behill? Yes. So just a couple of questions. The residential value by district, is that taxable or full value?
I believe if you look at page... Let me go back here. At the very front of the presentation, on page five, it'll give you that information on the very top.
So that is the... Okay. Net taxable, it appears? Okay.
Okay.
And then on the secondary homes, just a quick question. This isn't by the, any, anyone who has a second home? It wasn't ran, the data wasn't gathered by running a list of secondary homes, like anything that's not your primary residence?
No, this is ran by the owner's name.
Just by...
And so that's how we pulled that information.
Yeah, and I agree with you. It wouldn't be accurate because a lot of mortgages do pay for the mortgages. I mean, goes directly to the mortgage company.
To that point, then, Madam Assessor and Commissioner Behill, is there, is there a more accurate way of gathering the numbers of second, secondary homes?
Other than having someone specialize in it or just doing that, it would be very complex.
Okay.
So...
Understood.
Thank you.
If I may add, yeah, I believe that it would require, as they're inspecting, to determine whether it's a primary residence or a secondary, you know, like a Airbnb, that would be through field inspections encoded a particular way to extract the data.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And that being said, there's also, you're going to have homeowners that are not going to want to tell you if it's a second home, because then their tax rate would potentially go up to non-res, and we'd be taxing it as a commercial property. Because it's bringing in income to them. So we recognize that they're not using it as a permanent or just a regular rental, then we're going to look at it as...
Although, although there is, there not, you know, the, the option that the secondary home is just left empty, so we, it's not a commercial use for vacation rental, so, which we have like a very high percentage of homes that fall into that category. But I, I hear you, like, I don't know that people, at the moment of a building inspection, would, would fess up, yeah, I'm only here for two or three months, you know?
Yes.
Madam Chair? I'm sorry, Chair. I think what's going to help our Madam Assessor is the data, I'm sorry, the software we just acquired, and we can, once we identify those secondary or those Airbnb, those, those homes that are being used in that manner, we can share with our assessor, and she can then value them accordingly.
The information. Thank you. I appreciate that. So on page nine, I believe if you review that, you can see all the information that was put into this. A lot of thought went into it. Since we have Daniel Rael as our new interim chief appraiser, he took a different approach to look at things. He recognized first the challenges that we have, which is maintaining staff and their compensation. You know, there are so many factors that go into when you're having someone that's going into your office and specializing in valuing a property, making sure that we get that land value correct, that improvement, whether it be commercial or it be a residential. The challenges are there, and recently, I believe Bobby Gonzalez, Senator Bobby Gonzalez, proposed and got passed that the appraisers be recognized for a little bit more of a wage increase, and so I'm hoping that you guys take that into consideration. I mean, I can't state enough how my staff, they have a really tall job, not only valuing, but sometimes property owners are not happy to see us. You know, they know that us, our visitor is going to dig into their pocket, and so of course, they don't want to give you as much information as they can or accurate information. Although, at the end of the day, you know, when we're out there, we don't know if we're going to have car trouble, we don't have radios to be able to get help, we don't have guns to protect ourselves. You know, I know that the dangerous jobs are there, you know. I was a field appraiser before I took my, came in as the assessor, and so I was out on field 85% of the time, you know, and, you know, the, the remarks that are made out there, you know, they're, they're tough. So the challenges are real. I mean, you know, and I have a young group of people, and I'm hoping that they stay on. It's really important. They're the, the life of our community. And a lot of times, you know, people seem to forget that and don't recognize, you know, they have car payments, insurance payments, house payments, or whatever it is, and when you're making almost nothing and you don't get recognized for the profession that an appraiser is, it gets discouraging for them, so I'm hoping that they stay on. So that's one thing that I would like for you guys to consider is that House bill that State Senator Bobby Gonzalez put in there, that you guys recognize that, along with the other challenges that we have right now. On page 10, we have the training, which is also a challenge because you're one and done, and that is not an easy thing for me to go to my staff and tell them, you know, you didn't pass, and so obviously, you know, we're going to take that approach, that you have to do it on your own. We've been hoping to be able to get them to take the second test, which really makes sense, because you're paying $150, I think, for a second test versus going again for the per diem and the entire cost of the class starting fresh. So it would benefit Taos County to allow those people to go up, you know, and for me to be able to use my 1% appraisal fund, that's what that is there for. So I'm hoping that there's adjustments, revisions made to the plan for training for the assessor's office, if you guys would be so kind as to consider that. We have that in part of our plan. That is on, specified on page 10, 11, all the way through to page 19. You know, we're, we're looking at our information. The previous plan on page 12, the reappraisal plan, Daniel put together a really good plan as what I think. He, he did put a date in there for 2024. I mean, we obviously start as now. Now is our busy time. We have protests that are up, and, you know, that is one of the reasons why I am presenting today, because Daniel is busy with protests and helping staff out. So, you know, we have to step in there and do what we have to do to help our constituents and, and our staffing now. So if you look at the previous planning process that was there, that was put together by Mike Mooney, we weren't able to move forward on that. And it's a shame, because, you know, it was a good plan. You know, we were hoping to go by sectors, but again, what was held back was staffing. And so, you know, whenever we're losing people in training and retraining and we have new people, it's difficult. So I would like for you guys to consider the new plan that Daniel has put in place. It's a really good one. Residential and agricultural properties on the very bottom of that. Instead of, we focus all our appraisal staff on one market by sub-district. You know, when you're reviewing this plan, I hope it's acceptable to you all, you know. I invite you to read it. I'm getting a little winded. I had some difficulties this week, early on in the month. As Darlene mentioned, she lost, we lost Dolly Perata. I too have lost my cousin Lydia Garcia, who was an icon and the artist here in Taos. And so I get emotional because this is, it's difficult to think, here I am presenting, and she was one of my huge supporters. So it's kind of difficult. If I'm just going a little bit faster, I'm just losing focus here. Let me get back in here.
You're doing a great job walking us through this, and we appreciate you being here doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. And so we anticipate getting the Eagle View, the pictometry, the program that we have to do, the aerial views. We have gone to the three-inch imagery, and that's really good, because you can pull in, whether it's living space, a porch, a garage, you can see those factors, kind of like from the roof. You can, it's called the bleke image, right, Anthony? Or you can pull it around and you can actually take a look at the front and stuff. And so, yeah, so we have that going on, and then we have the vacant properties that we also have to review, and, you know, we're analyzing that market as well, you know. For those of you that don't know, vacant land and commercial properties are the only properties that can be moved up and down at any time. And so when we're looking at those things, I mean, it's important for us to realize the residential has a cap of 3% a year, and so we have those situations at hand where sometimes someone won't come in and tell us that they have increased their square footage of living space and fund discovery, then we captured at that time. But, you know, those are all items that you guys may not be aware of as to how we value commercial properties. I currently don't have a dedicated team to commercial properties. I'm hopeful that with this plan that we have been talking about, that we're able to contract a commercial appraiser and maybe look at that and bring us to current market on those. We have a difficult time as a lot of commercial properties don't want to give us their income data, and so then it holds us back from being able to do that. But I think if we get a commercial appraiser, that would help us out tremendously. And so this plan calls for that kind of thing to happen. The timeframe, if you look at the bottom of page 13, the efforts are going to be at Taoski Valley, because that's where we have the most growth. It's tremendous, and as the past several years, we've captured some of that, but we're still lacking in that. So that's one of the areas that we're going to look at first. And it's got timeframes in there as well. You may want to recognize, or you probably recognize, depending on the weather, sometimes we can't get out to the ski valley. I mean, it's a busy season and those kind of things, so it has to be like during the summer when we get up there. And then also, Daniel has gone ahead and, and recognized that the neighborhoods in Valdez, Arroceco, El Salto, Desmontes, Upper Colonias will be the next areas to focus on. So we're hoping to be able to move that project through. We have other appraisal projects on hand, and we have begun the process of identifying buildings on the database on short rental properties. That's that bed and breakfast that we were talking about. We will be reviewing our all-large properties of 80-plus acres for those people that have incorrect classifications or may have correct classifications, but that's also another project that was recommended by the state that we look at that. We are looking to revise our records and hopefully that we have good information for the state as well when they come in to review, that we have lease agreements in place, and that we actually have an application on hand of how that was granted, and then follow-up with site visits. So that's also another project that we have on there that's ongoing. As mentioned, the review of building permits, this one is going to be conducted. We have some really old permits. I believe that planning and zoning requires that they do a new application or an extension, and if not, they have to reapply again. We have some that are there that are ancient. I mean, now, we've cleaned it up before, but of course, with the files being so big and people moving around, some got left behind, so that's what we're going to be focusing on as well, is to clean that up as well. So any questions on those items?
Thank you, Ms. Dimas. Commissioner Behill, did you have a question?
Not on those, on the Senate bill. I don't know if I...
Go ahead.
Okay. So just a couple of clarifications on the Senate bill you made reference to, Senate Bill 324.
Yes.
Because the Senate bill itself is to, to provide a additional compensation, and, and there's always been compensation.
Yes, there has, but this is just...
I was just curious what the increase, for example, in Appraiser 1, it states here that it's seven, I think you've placed it here, excuse me, page 11. Let me go back.
Previously, it was 7,500 recognition. Before that, it was 3,500. The assessors are allowed to also get that compensation, as you're well aware of that. They moved it up to 7,500 a couple of years ago, but when that happened, they didn't include the assessors on that. So, you know, the only additional compensation that I'm getting right now is the 3,500. Obviously, my deputy assessor has all her four, so she qualifies for the 7,500, and potentially now the $9,000 that are additional compensation because of the intensity of the classes. So I'm hopeful that you all recognize my hard work as well with that, and that I am allowed to also get the 9,000 instead of just 3,500. So...
And if you'll refresh my memory, was it, I want to say it was a one-time increase, like one, a check for? Is this...
No.
It's not? Okay, I can see Brett.
They included that on your base salary.
Okay. Got it. Okay, thank you for reminding me of that. Okay, that's all I've got. I just wanted to understand.
Vice Chair Romero, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have, I have one question, maybe just a clarification on the 80-acre-plus tracts for agricultural. I'm wondering why the 80, 80 acres, you have agricultural land that's less than 80 acres also, right?
Correct, but what this one is hitting on is this is hitting on the grazing, and that is a different classification as well as the ag. The ag normally requires one acre or more to be in production. The 80 acres is for grazing, and we have to take a look at those as well.
But, but you can have smaller tracts that are used for grazing?
You can, for, you can have smaller tracts if they're combined with other family members. Let's say you have 40, and then you have 40, and you're adjacent to each other, they're right up against each other, then you would qualify for the classification of grazing because the properties are contingent, contingent, they're right there together.
But a smaller tract could still be classified as agricultural if you have a grazing permit and have...
No.
It could still be agricultural. Right. Yeah, okay.
Agricultural, not grazing.
Right, the large to be grazing.
80 acres plus has to be grazing.
Yes, exactly.
It could still fit in one of the other classifications.
Commissioner Romero, if I may, so the grazing status, and as they've stated, there are three classifications. The grazing, the 80 acres, is very specific. You have to have livestock on that 80 acres to qualify for grazing classification. You have to have livestock on that 80 acres to qualify for grazing classification. You can qualify for agricultural lands for less than 80 acres and still have livestock, but it's a different classification, still falls under agriculture. Is that how we all said the same thing?
Thank you. Um, and Ms. Demas, I just have one question or, um, one thing to maybe have you comment on. Um, you mentioned the role of pictometry, right?
Right.
And I understand that that's a pretty significant investment.
It is.
Wondering if you could just help us understand a bit, because I can imagine, but I'm not the expert. Like I can imagine like the, the payoff for that, like what, what the return is once you make that major investment on that project?
Right now, we have that major investment on place, in place. And what it does, it, it helps us be able to visit the property from our desks because that software is in our desks. And let's say we don't, we have bad weather or areas that we can't reach readily. That helps us tremendously. Uh, it has brought forward some increases to our tax base. Uh, I haven't used it as much as I would like to. Uh, reason being the staffing. And so that's where it ties me in a little bit more as the staffing. If I don't have the staffing to be able to use a program as much, but I still have to do the site visits that are critical because, you know, people want to see them. You know, they want to make sure that we have captured it as such. This other, uh, investment is there and it helps us. It's another tool for us to be able to get out there.
Thank you. So it does potentially then increase what you're able to bring in.
And once we're fully staffed, my goal as, as your current assessor is to leave space for growth for that part of it. Um, I really think that, uh, planning and zoning uses it right now. I've reached out to, uh, the Taos Soil and, uh, Water District. I've reached out to El Prado Water, uh, El Valle de los Rancho's. Uh, a few of them came in. I had, um, I'm going to say about 20 or less attendance, right? And, uh, it's a really good, um, program to have in place. My goal is that the new assessor, whoever it is that comes in utilizes it because that is, it's the way of the future. It helps E-911, the police identification, the layers that are on there. Um, this is where Anthony comes in. It gives you owner numbers, it gives you street addressing, it just provides.
Sure.
Anthony's going to add something to it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Anthony Martinez, Assessor's Office and, uh, Madam Chair, just to add to the, uh, an answer to your question. In addition to what Assessor Demas said, and, uh, just to echo, it would be, it would be a great benefit if we could get like a dedicated desktop appraiser utilizing this, uh, technology and investment the county has made, because there is a product we also have invested in and called the Change Finder Program. And that specifically has fields, um, that can help calculate and keep tabs about all the new, um, uh, improvements identified using this technology. But we are limited in doing the work to fill in those fields because of the lacking staff. So just to let you know, we have the tools getting in place. We just need the manpower to push it forward.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Appreciate, appreciate the information. Thank you. Commissioner Beal, you had a question?
Yes, and I agree, it is a great tool. Um, just a clarification, it is a picture in time, right? So you'll have to, uh, have that updated every so often. Is there a plat for that?
Oh. Repeat that again?
So it's a picture in time, right? When they do the flyover.
Yes, okay. So I just want to make sure I understood the question. That is correct, um, Commissioner Beal. The, uh, investment, the program, especially being, uh, served in the online program, uh, Eagle View. It is a, uh, our center point where any user that has access to it can see the date and time. Uh, our, our program, we have, uh, imagery going to 2006. That was a shared image from a, a project that wasn't driven by the county, but was given to us when we entered a contract with Eagle, Eagle View back in 2016. And, uh, from the contract being signed in 2018, where we started our flights, we've got two-year increments, starting from that point with our last flight, uh, being flown this past year. So we have basically imagery date stamped from 2006 to 2023. Uh, that's important, as you know, for identification of improvements that may have slipped through the cracks and aren't being on the tax rolls. So to help back our office to have visual evidence to show when these structures are constructed so that we can do the appropriate application of valuation to those assessments.
Thank you.
Thank you. And once again, I will say it is a great tool and, um, great to hear that it is updated. Is it for the entire county? Have, has the entire county been flown? Or are we still looking at just a portion of the county?
I'm going to, we're going to be looking at that in just a minute. I'm going to have Anthony speak on that because we do have that towards the back of the presentation. So I'd be patient to, uh, I'm almost done, by the way. Then I'll just let Anthony, uh, go with that. But, uh, on page 15, I think that's where we were in regards to, uh, where we're at in the plan. Uh, we do have solar panels that are centrally assessed and we have those kinds of situations that are on right now. Uh, our approach has to change, uh, a little bit. Uh, I mean, you know, with those building permits that we had on there, uh, that has really created, uh, it appears that we're not doing as much when we really are with the limited staff that we have. But, um, yeah, those building permits and, uh, solar panels, all those items that we have to look at, you know? So that is why the approach is being looked at a little bit different. And so, um, let me see. Um, on page 15, the middle, we're going to be moving our, uh, appraisal to digital, uh, records. And which means that you can see them upfront, you know, when you tack into that as well. And last but not least, the lack of staffing and that's where the Change Finder comes in and the, the new information on here. I really hope that you all have taken the chan, uh, the time to read this. Uh, my staff has worked really hard. Uh, simply we had to ask for an extension and so we are in our busy season and we have the state doing our evaluation. So a lot of thought went into this, a lot of hours. So it's really important for, um, for the commissioners to understand where we're coming from and hoping that we get accepted and approved from that as well. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and, uh, visit the housing market really quick. Um, so when you're looking at the statement on here, we have seen market increase sales for improved properties over the past several years, seemingly coinciding with the surge of the housing market throughout many parts of the country. Some of the sales prices far exceed what we can reasonably have on hand. Uh, but using our cost method or improvement and, uh, comparable sales land, we're doing our best to capture what we can. Um, it's not reflected, those, uh, higher sales. I believe that we had over, um, I'm going to say maybe 10 go over a million five, a million two, even higher. So when those properties are selling for that and you're trying to compare where you live at and how we're going to value, I mean, it's, we just, it's difficult for us to capture that. Very difficult for us to capture how we can make an adjustment to a property that we simply can't raise to the sales price because that's not an accurate number for us. They paid more because some person wanted it. Uh, maybe, uh, Rockefeller moved in and we didn't know. And so, you know, those kinds of situations happen. And so even though they paid 1,500,000 for it, our numbers should not reflect where we can carry it out that high. So we have those situations on hand. So with looking at the market, um, I'm going to go ahead and cross it over to the Taos County Sales Ratio Study, which is one of the requirements. This in here shows you the, the number of cells. And I don't know if any of you are versed in the I W L O and what all comes in with this numbers that we have to be in place, we have to be with a certain dollar amount. And so, you know, when we're looking at the situations, um, we have to be within those standards and that's nationally recognized, uh, throughout the entire state, uh, country. So, um, on page 18, we have the ratio distribution increments of five. And so if you go down, those are all the cells and what we're looking at and where we came up with. So, um, those are a little bit more difficult for the layperson to understand. Uh, so I'm not going to break into a lot of that. Uh, and then we have them on the following page, uh, the 10% increments as well. And then, um, on page 20, we have the records keeping. Uh, in 2022, we had 4,026 deeds, uh, that were processed. Uh, to date, we have 923. That number will grow as the year goes by because we still have a whole seven months to go on this. So when we're looking at that. Um, and here's where you get Anthony to go over the information as to the cleanup and the GIS part. And so here's your expert on that. Thank you so much for your time and I'll be back if you have more questions.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Assessor. We definitely appreciate the time that you, Danielle, Anthony, your whole staff has put into gathering this data for us. Thank you.
Cool. All right, uh, Anthony Martinez, Assessor's Office, uh, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, rest of the commission, all the folks, uh, present and watching on TV. Uh, I guess I'll, do you want me to go and pictometry straight away or you just want me to go in chronological order of what I have written? I'll just go in chronological order and we can go from there.
However it's presented in the.
So just to, uh, share with you guys, uh, staff is, uh, so just to be upfront and clear, we are in the process of, uh, converting from paper map data into digital data. It's quite a process. It's something that's been going on for quite some time. So it's, uh, it's, it's, it's a big challenge in, in trying to do, you know, because, uh, as most people, especially a lot of people that have moved into the county from other jurisdictions after the post-COVID era, uh, you know, they're used to having a current correct, uh, dataset that they can go online, press a few buttons and like it tells them the whole world. And so we are, are constantly trying to get to that point. We, um, and we're working on that. So the last year, the staff of the Assessor's Office has, uh, been, uh, focusing from the last time I presented in front of you guys, we're north of Questa. We are currently cleaning out the sections that are in, um, Township 29 North, a range 12 East, as well as Range 13 each of the same township, uh, tax, or Assessor Office tax, that would be Tax District 9 Out, Sub District 911, Darlene, if you recall, more commonly known as the Sierra area. So that's where we do, we're, we're focusing most of our cleanup efforts as we go from the paper map base to the digital side. Um, another, uh, element in our office that we use to clean up our digital data is coming from the form of parcel split process. These are all the lands that have gone through the planning department's processes to seek approval to have their plat be signed and approved and recorded and associated deeds recorded. They then get, um, picked up by our office and processed. So this is a big component to assist us. In addition to the section tax map cleanup process I just mentioned, uh, last year, uh, we received 263 deeds of this type that triggered this work. Uh, in the past, our GIS analysis, Don Royal, had made the, uh, cleaned up section maps for the old subdivisions that we have on the western side of the county. These are your subdivisions that were created like in 1963 that are more commonly known as the estates. There's payless estates, Carson Estates, Rancho Zatales Estates, for example. So, uh, uh, this data is a, one of our, our, our more commonly asked, uh, requests that the office receives almost every day. Uh, it kind of picks up now when the, the weather gets good. People come from all over the country finding deeds and their grandparents safe and whatnot, where they want to see where this land's located. So we constantly in our office field all sorts of requests in an effort to try and help out with these requests and reduce the amount of traffic received to all the staff in our office. Um, this past year, a lot of that data had been, uh, improved on the, uh, digital side to be displayed on our website. Uh, compliments to our technician Natalie Evans for, uh, doing the work to get all these so that they can then be, uh, put on our digital map so that a user can now, uh, pick up information with that effort. So these are examples of all the cleanup processes that the staff of the Assessor's Office have been focused on. And we will continue, just to let you know, moving forward, we will continue on the section tax map cleanup process to continue working north towards the border of Colorado, focusing primarily on the highway corridor of State Highway 522. You know, you can, as you've driven that, I imagine in your day, you have the mountains on the east side and the river on the west as you go towards the border. All the fee land that are in that corridor is what we'll be focusing on moving forward. So I'd probably be talking about that this time next year for this presentation. If you're wondering about what our future plans are. And eventually we'll then swing east and then come back down south. So eventually we'll start cleaning up panasco sometime, probably maybe in your reelection. So, uh, the next, uh, main thing in the, the, uh, mapping world of the Assessor's Office is the aerial image capture project. Not to, uh, or to repeat again, we entered into a contract in 2018. Uh, that was a multi-year contract. Basically what that means is we set up a contract to fly every two years in a six-year period. We have successfully completed flights one, two, and now three. Uh, I received notice from our, our project, uh, manager, working with Eagle View, that they had reached, uh, done flying status on May 2nd of this year. That means that all of the proposed 541 sectors have been captured and they're being reviewed for quality control, which that quality control proved that to do some touch-ups because there were some parts, um, because we started in the fall, in October, and we tried to fly as much as possible until the snow came and then started to make the images not usable. Project got paused, it resumed back on April 15th of this, uh, this past year and then got completed on, on May 2nd. Quality control recognized there's got to be a couple of touch-up areas, so they're currently flying that now. So we should be getting a complete product and probably at the end of the summer, I think the post-production returned product should be sent to the county. Uh, to get back to the question, we have not flown the whole county, the whole total square mileage or square miles that covers all of Taos County. Uh, we basically, to explain it, we inherited some sectors that was mostly the town from the 2006 prod, um, a project that was done with Bing Maps back at that time. When we entered into the contract with 2018, we originally flew 306 sectors, which expanded upon from the town of some parts, um, in the county jurisdiction. Flight number two then expanded to the 541 sectors that are illustrated on page 22 of that little map there. What you see, uh, purple squares, those are the sectors. Again, a sector basically is a square mile that are, are being paid, um, with funding from Taos County to capture. Uh, the reason why we're not flying all square miles, all sectors of Taos County is due to costs. I would love to have the whole county. But because we're a mixture of, uh, different jurisdictions, meaning we have tribal forests, BLM, uh, we have focused, uh, obviously for our efforts and our investment to be on these, um, 541 private land sectors. And that's where we're currently at. Uh, we did have, uh, uh, the office that was spearheaded by Assessor Demas here, did have a, uh, on, uh, May 11th, we had a presentation where we invited other entities, Taos Soil, Kit Carson, the town of Taos, for example, um, to try and, uh, show the product so that we could hopefully come to a business agreement to share data and costs. So it was a pretty good presentation and we look forward to hopefully working with some of these entities to maybe expand and get a bigger footprint. But for right now, 541 sectors is where we're at. And again, just to repeat, it's three-inch resolution data that we are working on. And, you know, I think it's, uh, we should, uh, acknowledge the fact that we have completed the third flight from the original contract signed in 2018. And I believe we're looking to move forward with a, a new contract, which is on the agenda. Which I guess you'll be hearing about today. So, well, a lot of production here. All right. So, um, I guess the final thing I want to touch upon in my report today is the, uh, online map that we have. You know, a little bit of history is that, uh, we, there was an online map when I first started working here about 11. working here about 11 years ago, but only was really showing the town of Taos areas. We tried to expand upon that, but we're sort of limited in that contract. We've moved on. Now, we got some more, or we have different technology in place, mostly with our main software provider of the GIS software, Esri. We're utilizing their product called ArcGIS Online that gave us the capabilities to serve the data that we have cleaned up online. Again, being that we don't have a current correct countywide GIS layer, it is a challenge. So, we sort of had to brainstorm and come up with a way how we could present online information countywide. So, there's like basically two layers. The layer that is showing the data that has been cleaned up by the Assessor Office mapping staff and then another layer that's underlying that gets cut out, you know, so basically when a section or an area is cleaned up, it cookie cuts into the map and the area that isn't cookie cut will tell a user who to contact if they have questions about who owns that land. It seems to be working pretty successful. An online map didn't exist in Taos County until after the COVID pandemic when the need really became more relevant or relevant than normal. And so, the map was created on May 7th of 2021, just to recap that from previous presentations. And since its birth, this map has been viewed about 34,000, just under 35,000 times from the day I wrote this report. So, it seems to be getting a lot of use from many people across the worldwide web. So, I'd just like to add and share that it is a, a good tool as evident from when we had the Calf Canyon Herman Peaks fire, there seemed to be a lot of concern, not really knowing the location of that fire to the location of Taos County, the town, or structures and stuff like that. So, I was able to recognize the need as well and how the, the online map tool is, is a good tool and was able to incorporate that fire information to help the public and staff. So, it is continuing to be utilized and updated and we plan to keep it going. And that pretty much concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Martinez. Commissioners, any questions for Anthony? Thank you. Appreciate the information.
Thank you too.
That brings us to a close. Does anybody have any questions for me or comments or suggestions?
Any questions?
Comments? First of all, I would like to say sorry for your loss, Maria, Madam Assessor. I remember Lydia. She was a, another great soul, gem to our community. So, I'm sorry for your loss, our loss, right? Also, want to say thank you very much for taking my questions or my recommendations and bringing them forward, you know, fulfilling that, the, the ask. And this is definitely something that, this report is very helpful, gives us information, tells us exactly, you know, what we need to know. Would like to at some point visit with you, maybe in, in the near future, just some additional things that we might consider, but truth be told, I think this is great.
Thank you.
I know there was a lot of effort. I know what it takes to, to put it together. So, just want to thank you for, for doing so.
Thank you. And my staff totally deserves a high five all the way across. All single employee in the Assessor's Office has contributed big time to, not only to this report, but to the growth of the valuation assessment that we need. So, thanks to them. And nothing else being said, I appreciate you guys and thank you so much.
Thank you. And please, when you go back to your office, take our thanks, our gratitude back to your team for sharing this information and doing the hard work. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point in the agenda, with apologies to Mr. Jones and Ms. O'Brien, we're going to jump backwards ever so slightly to something very important. Agenda item eight, awards and recognitions. And specifically, we're going to go to item B, a presentation of a proclamation and certificates to the Taos County EMS and Fire Department in recognition of National EMS Week, which is May 21st through May 27th, 2023. Manager Harmio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief Cordova is out this week. His daughter graduates from high school. So, you guys know how that is. They're preparing, getting ready for the party, getting ready for graduation. And then, our EMS director, he's in training this morning, Mr. Varela. Mr. Hampton, our fire marshal will come up and receive this. Emergency Medical Service Week, whereas emergency medical services are vital public service and whereas the members of our emergency medical services team are ready to provide a life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those sudden illnesses or injury. And whereas, emergency medical services system consists of emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency physicians, emergency nurses, firefighters, educators, administrators and others. And whereas, the members of our emergency medical services team, whether their career or volunteer engage in thousands of hours of specialized training, continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it's appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishment, accomplishments of the emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. And now therefore, it be resolved that the Taos County Board of Commission, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim, May 21st through May 27th, 2023 is Emergency Medical Services Week. Signed, Chair Angelique Brush, Vice Chair Bob Romero, Commissioner Darlene Vehill, Commissioner Miguel Romero Jr., and Commissioner Ronlan Muscat. And as attested by our County Clerk Fellerman, I'll tell you, thank you, Mr. Hampton, for everything you do.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the commission. If I may, I just want to extend our gratitude to you guys. Your support to us in the last couple of years has been paramount to the success that we hope to obtain in the future. This week is all about these guys. These are the ones that are out on the street that are making a difference. And you may have noticed our other crew had to leave rather suddenly to go deal with another call. But we just want to recognize them and, and again, thank you guys so much for this opportunity.
Thank you all. We appreciate the fact that you're out there for us. So, we are, I would think I'm gonna go ahead and speak for all of us. We are happy to support what you need in order to keep doing the critical work you do for our community. Thank you.
So, members of the commission, there, there's this one, there's one of our employees that we're not gonna bring forward for some other reasons that we can't explain to you, but I'm gonna bring the ones that are here forward. So, Destiny, would you mind coming up? All right. And then, the other ones you see sitting here, we have one of our students from the EMT class, so we're always honored to have them here. And then, the gentleman sitting right here, Lucius, he's a brand-new hire. This is his first day on the job. So, we weren't, we weren't able to get EMR certificate, but thank you guys again so much.
We owe you one. Thank you so much and thanks again for the work that you guys do. We know it's not easy, but we also know that it is absolutely critical to our community. So, thank you for being out there. Thank you, Mr. James Hampton.
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to, to share and, and so nice to see you involved in, in protecting our community. Commissioner Brush, Chair Brush and I went to a training, a fire training and we put on the equipment and I could barely stand. I think the equipment was probably heavier than me. But nonetheless, we really appreciate you and it's just nice to see you really taking this on. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The sheriff and undersheriff, they're actually in a case next door, so when they can, they'll come on over.
Thank you for that update, Brent. And that, well, so we're just gonna keep on getting through our agenda because we, we have, and thank you all for your patience with us. We ended up with some pretty meaty items, but important items on the agenda today. So, next up, we have item 12B, which is a presentation to the Taos County Board of Commissioners as a work-study session to update and discuss the current draft of the proposed short-term rental ordinance, one of my personal favorite topics. Mr. Andy Jones, our senior planner, thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, fellow commissioners, Vice Chair, Commissioner Mascarenas, Commissioner Vehill, Attorney Trejo, County Manager. I'm really excited to be finally bringing this to you in some form today. This has been a long effort and there's still a lot of work left to do. As I noted in my staff report, the, you know, I've worked on this alone so far and I haven't had the opportunity to get feedback from Mr. Trejo or Mr. Harmio or Mr. Madrid or Mr. Silva, or even Rachel and Rudy within the planning department yet. Haven't had an opportunity to weigh in on it, but we wanted to give everyone really at this point, especially you, the commission, an opportunity to see where we're at, provide feedback, you know, see if, see if I'm on the right track at all and, and give some direction and guidance, you know. And so, with that, I think, I think probably the one thing from my staff report that I want to probably read into the record is just the, the, the goals that I cited in order kind of why we're doing this, why, why are we regulating short-term rentals? Why are we doing it now? I think, I think it's a big issue across the community. And so, the goals that I, that I've cited at this point are, one, to improve overall compliance so that Taos County can collect adequate fees for enforcement and monitoring; two, conserve more housing units for the local workforce; three, mitigate nuisance activities that are often associated with short-term rentals, including noise, parking and water conservation; four, protecting public health and safety and the quality of life for our rural neighborhoods; five, balancing all of this with the rights of property owners; and six, potentially creating a, a stream of revenue toward more housing solutions. So, you know, with, with all of that, I stand for any questions that you may have as part of this work-study session to kind of get a conversation going.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, and thank you for starting with the goals. I know the goals of doing this are multiple and complicated and sometimes even might like butt up against each other. So, it is not a simple issue and so I appreciate you diving into it as you have. You've put, I know you've put a lot of time into it and bringing it forward for us to start discussing because I do agree that this is a significant issue when we talk about what we're trying to preserve in our community, what we're trying not to lose. This effort to kind of get this issue somewhat under control, at least better understood, is a key part of preserving who we are and what our community is. Commissioners, we have Andy's 19-page draft ordinance and again.
I've, that's one thing that needs to be done is I need to streamline it a little bit more. It was longer.
You've given, you've given us something to start with and I do appreciate you also giving us the heads up that, that this hasn't been vetted by anyone else yet. So, we understand that it will morph and change and streamline or not. We understand that.
Last week, we only had four items on the, three items on the agenda, which were the two presentations. I knew Maria was gonna be on there. I called Andy and Rachel. Hey, I don't have nothing for the agenda. I know I was gonna have some bars on the consent agenda. Can we have a way-too-early look at the draft ordinance because, because it hadn't, he hadn't sent it around yet and he's very accommodating. I go, let's get the conversation going. Agenda did tend to fill up a little more than anticipated, but we do need to get the conversation going.
Thank you. Understand. And there's, there's a lot of work to be done around here, so understand.
Madam Chair, this.
Yes, Mr. Trejo.
Totally out of left field here. The, the assessor asked, asked me whether or not her plan needed to be approved by the commission. And I, I wanted to make sure. I didn't think so. It just had to be presented.
It was listed on our agenda as presentation.
Okay. So, there's your answer, Madam.
Yeah. But thank you for checking. That's, I, during your presentation, I, I did wonder that myself, so thank you for confirming. Yeah. All right. Bye. Okay. Commissioner Vehill.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Andy. Really appreciate this. Just a, a couple of questions. I noticed, first of all, you used some information from the town of Taos and also it appears that you're, you also brought in some Santa Fe information.
Yes. Yeah. I, I started kind of with our original goal, you know, kind of started Randall Van Bleek. Did I get that name right, Patrick? He, he did a draft two years ago or so and it was really just tweaking the town of Taos ordinance. And, and so, in order to kind of acknowledge the differences between a municipality and a rural county and also incorporate some more up-to-date best practices, I looked at numerous other ordinances. I liked a lot of what Santa Fe County had done. They just passed theirs in December, I believe. And then, the city of Santa Fe had some good things. It's hard to transpose a municipality ordinance into an area like Taos County where we, we don't have for the large part of the county zoning, so.
Okay. Yeah. Because my second part to that question or, or comment is if, whether or not you would be able to identify what portions you'd use from the town and from Santa Fe, because my initial thought is to pull the towns and pull Santa Fe's and start comparing and, and you know, of course, want to make sure that this even fits our community, but I was just wondering how difficult it would be to highlight.
I could, I could probably highlight those. I mean, you know, and then there are, there are a few things in there that are just, that I kind of created, not, not necessarily out of thin air, but after reading best practices and, and all of that. And so, there, I would say there are very few parts that are just.